That's written in there somewhere. Seventy six.
I've only got twelve years ago.
Pauline Doherty.
A lot of years more than you do.
All right, I only got four years ago.
A bar is a four years, okay.
You can do a roll call.
You saying I'm getting old?
Well, you want me to do a roll call? All right. Voight?
Yes.
Janice?
Here.
Zuber?
Here.
Farnum? Housley? English?
Here.
Brunner?
Yes, here.
Public comment?
We've watched over Ben lately, been busy. I couldn't miss it.
Okay, Sam, no public comment. Committee reports. Alan, you want to start?
Um, really don't have too much. I'm sure Jeff's going to get more into the financial part or whatever as we went through with our, all our subcommittees the other day. Sent an note into Bushu, I copied it to you, I think I talked to you. I'm looking for like a little bit of calendar events, just to see as we go through two thousand fourteen. So maybe, for no other reason, so I can just store it in my brain when things may be due or may not be due, what we're looking for. Even especially insurance areas and important care. Other than that. And I think Jan's going to talk about him, so.
We just want to talk about the Greenway.
Uh, we could talk about Greenways if you like us to.
We would like.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is I missed it.
Okay. Um, we had probably, I don't know, I'd say there was at least sixty people there, uh, that meeting. Uh, Aaron has official sign-in machine, everybody was there. Felt pretty good, there were, Jeff was there, Dale was there, Carl was there, so that's, you know, some board information. Harry Hughes and Mayor Smith and Paul Ruffler, they're from the city, so I mean, out to.
Yeah, right. Morning?
Uh, so we had, I think, good representation, we had good representation, I think, also people who were very much in for something like this. And also, there were a few comments of concerns as far as like, you know, how are you going to do it? What is it? As we had three professionals there, Kent Massey was there for Massey, Massey also works with the city. And we had two guys from Eastern that talked about the, the results of their survey that they performed also initially for the city, I think, and then a little bit for the county, and they kind of put that together. They found out that there's probably fifteen to eighteen percent, pretty solid, that really don't care or really don't want, uh, a Greenway trailways within the county. But they liked that idea because it was consistent. They, that was a question they always ask in all their stuff to give them, give everybody now. Uh, you know, would you like this, would you like nothing? You know, so that, and that was pretty consistent in there. Um, and people that were there, people from the results of the survey showed there's a really high interest in trailways slash Greenways throughout the, throughout the county. Uh, they were very, very happy with the results of their survey from the standpoint of not so much what the survey said, but it was listed very high on their return. And so that's what, they liked that part better than anything else. It's, it's great to have results that are hopefully based in fact by so many people returning them. It went on for, seemed like a little bit long as I was standing up there, but I, I honestly did try to keep people kind of halfway in line.
You did a good job.
With time and comments, you know, just.
You were well focused.
Just to kind of, to get them going, but I, and then we heard from different people. So right now, the next step is we told them, uh, is like, this wasn't a decision-making type of meeting that we had, it was more informational, and we wanted everybody to share their information. And so the next step, as Kent Massey also said, uh, and Aaron spoke a little bit to us, it, and is really, you know, if there's money that's going to become available, you know, that's going to be the biggest issue for, we agree for us and probably for the city at all. Then you and Jeff with their, that meeting too.
You said, you said Aaron spoke briefly?
Yes.
Of course, you know.
We were timed.
I had the buzzer go off.
We were, it was double timed. And he went over maybe, what, thirty seconds?
Yeah.
Only asked Jeff how much time he had left.
And then we was down to this.
And the buzzer went off. He was doubly timed.
I thought it was.
And I thought he did a good job too, of explaining basically what the format of the meeting was.
Five minutes.
Well, it was actually six and a half, because I didn't even know, I can't even talk to us for five minutes.
I wasn't even going to say that.
That's the truth.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Mike?
Is, is the meeting started already?
Yes, I have.
While you were gone.
And it's time for your committee report.
Uh, I have, uh, Jill Taylor's going to be here in a little bit. Uh, we're going to have a meeting, uh, it has a meeting after, there's a committee meeting, and we're going to make, look at some resumes, and I encourage you're all invited, absolutely, to stay and discuss it. Other than that, I don't have anything, no one to talk about until we get to executive session.
Jill?
It goes tomorrow, and I would like to talk about health and executive also.
Okay. That's it? You're done for here? All right, Dan?
Yeah, we had a meeting with Andrew last week on animal shelter, and I didn't think about it, Alan missing, we probably should, uh, we have a, a qualifications, an application for adoption of dogs at the animal shelter, so. I will make copies and at the workshop in April, I'll pass out and look through it, and then he probably be adopted or okayed at the next board meeting in April, so. It's, it looks pretty good if she got the, uh, application, I think off the internet or something.
Actually from Bushu?
Yeah.
From Bushu.
So it's, it's very precise and depth, so, uh, and I don't know, I asked you about state's attorney, if we should let him look at it first.
And Mark, I sent it to him at the time too, because he's the one who thought since it was a resolution dealing with the county offices, anyway, at that time, we probably ought to have a formal board.
Yeah, I did not think that.
Of the animal, we, you know, we adopted, we have new policy now where we're having the actual animal shelter adopt dogs, and so. At that time, anyway, he felt like that's probably something that we ought to do as a board.
I think Alan checked on the insurance too, and said, basically, we recovered, I think, from Bushu. And I called Bob Wilson by the door, and he's supposed to get it in, so. What I'm going to do, I'm going to go by animal shelter and talk to Andrew and see if there's anything on there that needs to be changed, bring it to the board in April, so. That's about where we stand right now with that stuff.
I forgot one thing. Liz Cheney returned from the health department board, through the health, and they want to put, uh, Ollie Smith is the chairman now, and he wanted me to, uh, make sure we got Dale Anderson nominated to take her place. Just wanted to get that on the agenda for people.
You guys have, what, have, done that in your meeting?
Yeah, we're just, we're attending him.
Janet brought me in.
She was going to. By Tardisend.
Yeah, I've got the information, I've got it in the file for next month.
Who's Dale Anderson, may I ask?
He used to be the Red Cross guy. He's the Red Cross, now he's a guy.
To the children's office for a long time.
Yeah.
Okay.
He was on this board, and he got, on the health department board, and got off, that was about the same time I got on, and, uh, what's her name took his place?
Cindy?
Cindy Bell took his place.
Oh, okay.
You know, they used to have a radio show together, remember that? NPRS.
Do you?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'll just go down the list really briefly. Wednesday morning at seven AM, the airport committee is going to have its first preliminary negotiation session with Jim Els. And, uh, we've been doing a lot of research and contact back and forth, and hopefully it'll be productive. I announced again, I mean, we discussed that at the last meeting.
Where's it going to be at?
Creckman Building.
Okay.
Now, we're, we don't want it, I mean, you're welcome to come. I, I, we have too many folks, I mean, we're better off just, but I mean, you're welcome to come, but.
If I, if I show up, then that might cause an issue with the dog, so there's no reason.
Well, there, it's going to be closed.
Yeah.
It's a public meeting. It's, like I was explaining, it's a public meeting, we'll ask for a public comment, and then we'll go into executive session.
Okay.
So the negotiations are not laid, no, Mike, I, I just, I was thinking about from the standpoint of having eight guys lined up against one guy.
I got you.
Do you see, but I mean, you're, that's for you to decide.
No, I already did, it's fine.
Uh, discussion we had, we talked about farm leases, and that's something that the airport committee is going to deal with, you may have read it in the paper. Uh, we're going to have the airport manager job description out and advertised for airport manager. Let's see.
Did you make a decision whether that's going to be full-time or part-time?
We made it for plus, approximately twenty-five hours at this point.
Okay.
Okay? We're going to deal with the other issues later.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, we got two bills, and I know you'll be particularly interested in this, Mike, because you weren't here. We've got a, in the, uh, case work, Dee Bergen versus Edgar County on the dog, we got a final bill from our attorney of eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, which will run by the state's attorney. And I don't believe it will be covered, I may have said it, but it will be covered by tort because everything else was covered on tort.
And that attorney was who?
Hal Rooster. That was the one that Mark appointed.
That's right, we couldn't use the appellate service, but that's right.
Then we did get a.
Why? Uh, I can't remember now, it was a conflict.
Well, no, it was because they didn't have the expertise.
Oh, the federal court, that's what.
Right, and, and, and this gentleman that represented us had had a case like this in the past.
In fact, I think he's came and spoke to us here on that day.
Right. Then we got a up-to-date bill from Quire, which I'll let you look at, and that bill is roughly for thirty-four hundred dogs.
He's got some files.
I did that on purpose to see if I could get, did it start to come off the chart?
I'm watching him the whole time.
Basically for. It was for thirty-four hundred eighty-six dollars and change, okay? And that brings us.
Is that the final bill?
No. That is an up-to-date, everything that's been going on at this point, okay?
That's, that's for him to sue our, the county board.
Well, you're taking that off, right?
Well, we need to look at that.
Well, you know, now, now it's off, remember, that was, if I understood it correctly, now it's off the individual members of the county board, but it's still on the county board.
We're not paying anyone to sue us.
We're still being sued.
Well, that's what we need to look at.
You're part of it, part of all of it.
And I mean, we all need to look at it and make a decision. It's not for me to just run it through and go, we'll pay this, okay?
We only should itemize it, shouldn't we?
Well, I mean, that's what we may have to do, is send it back to the sheriff, sheriff, and if we can't pull out what we need there, okay?
And I think Mark also probably looked at that, because he was the one talking about, to see if he could figure out when a, part of this was made and part of it wasn't, and part of it, you know.
He represents us.
And then, uh, lastly, and if I forgot everything, anything, let me know, but we did set, uh, or make a recommendation to the full board on the three, uh, elected officials and what their salary would be raised to over the next four years. It basically was two, two, fifteen hundred, and one thousand.
It was in the paper, I think.
Right, it was, but I just wanted to let Mike.
We're going to talk about that. Um, that's about the most assending thing I think I've heard of in a long time. And until I see some way that we're going to pay for it, you guys are going to have to prove to me that we got the money to pay for it.
Uh, additionally, I did remember one thing, we raised, uh, most of the fees that should generate about a hundred and fifty thousand bucks.
We've raised them, or we haven't, we haven't voted on raising them?
We will be voting, it's a recommendation to vote at the next meeting. We can discuss anything we want to discuss, I'm just, I'm just simply reporting, and then everybody else can comment.
As far as the fees, we need to get a list of all the fees that we're raising, the present fees and what we're raising it to, so everybody look at that prior to the.
There is a form that Bushu has included, which will list all of this stuff, as I understand.
Bellwether.
Bellwether, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I thought we had.
Well, but I mean, it's a full final form on which to make the recommendations, Carl, which should, I believe, set forth according to Augie, everything that we'll need to know, yes.
And we have to raise those, is there a statute deadline on that?
No, we don't have to do it at all, but a majority, in fact, the whole, the whole, well, everybody, let's see, we had, what, six people there? And that was pretty much.
I raised some.
Yes, we had a couple objections on the various ones.
And I want somebody to hire.
But we came to a conclusion.
But in the end, we all.
Yeah, we all.
Yeah, and we, it all, we laughed, we cried, and we became part of this.
Carl wanted them all hired, and we said no.
Okay, I didn't mean to tweet you.
And what it boiled down to was, what it would boil down to was, we paid X amount of dollars to, for recommendations, and unless we found some reason not to follow them, we figured we ought to take, we ought to, we ought to react positively to the recommendations that were made. So, in any rate, that's, that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, did you want to discuss that, or?
Well, yeah, what, are we going to raise, and I haven't, because I wasn't there, but you guys remember, are you going to raise the sheriff's process fee?
Actually, he said no on some of them, didn't he?
Well, here's what's going.
Here's what.
Here's what's going to happen, and I saw this happen several years ago. If the sheriff's fees get too high publicly, uh, uh, private individuals will start coming and doing those services, and they'll cut the sheriff out of it, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year. Because, for instance, you can, you can contract, uh, if you're a local attorney, you can contract to a, a local process service and get it done for about half of what the sheriff's doing it for now. Now, still a lot of attorneys want the sheriff to do it, it, it's a, it's more of an impact when somebody in uniform comes and knock on the door, and, you know, you, you, it's, it, it sends a message. But what I'm trying to tell you is if we get too high, as a sheriff department, the, the, the individual process service are going to come in and, and cut our throat, and, and you'll see a, you'll see a fifty, sixty percent decrease in sheriff paper service. But there's nothing says he has to be the one to serve papers.
Because we raised, currently, I think it was twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine dollars.
And he recommended.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
And most process servers are getting fifty to sixty dollars.
The actual cost was forty-seven, fifty.
Right. You can't get anything better than this.
Yeah, but you can get it done quicker, I mean, trust me, I was in the business, so I know what, I mean, it was a simple thing to go around. We took a lot of the sheriff's business away when Tim was here, uh, when I was doing it. Quite honestly, Tim thought it was great, because he didn't have to do it.
Well, eventually though, see, we can only do this once every five years. Okay, say they take it away, and then their costs go up, and in two and a half years, we're back in the ballgame.
And it gets about right.
If we don't do anything, then we're.
I'm just suggesting, I'm, I'm just want to throw this out so that you know, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying it's a.
For sure.
It's a, you don't want to get too high.
A lot of these fees look high, but we paid somebody to show us that that's what our costs, what our costs were, and, and none of them are above what they say our costs are.
This Mr. Farnum was pretty good about that, kind of rounding down lower, that I'm proud of him there.
Now, I had to even numbers too.
Yeah, that even. Was there other, what, what other, was there something else besides sheriff fees?
Well, August fees, you know, like additional copies, we're charging four dollars now, and we raised it to fifteen, well, I think that's ridiculous, but. It didn't cost that much more to be those additional copies.
But they are, the other, on the other side of it, they are certified copies.
I, I, I know, they're not just a copy machine copy, I realize that. But we, are we in the spirit of trying to generate revenue, or are we in the spirit of trying to keep, you know, Augie's office afloat? If those, if we raise that, it doesn't go right back to Augie, it goes to general fund, doesn't it?
Well, it depends on the fee.
Okay.
Some of it goes to funds that are fiduciary funds, some of them aren't, some of them are split, okay?
Yeah.
When I was talking about the fees, like there was one fee that we're going to charge in fifteen or sixteen dollars in additional copies, it's fifteen. And I was talking to Cheryl, my wife, and she said she had to, at work, go to the courthouse over there to get some kind of, um, certificate, birth certificate or something, it took less than five minutes, and for two copies, and we're going to get thirty dollars for him to work five minutes to. I just.
But Augie said there was more certified copies too.
Yeah.
It's stamped it.
We have the papers different.
Well, and the paper didn't cost that much. I mean, I didn't like it to piece of white sheet paper, but still, it's just too much for me, but I'll go along with it. My premise was, Mike, was that, you know, we, we only have a limited amount of time to do this, and for each year we don't do something, we are, we are going in a hole on those things. And it also amounts to, are the people who are actually using that service, do we want to, as a county, pay for them or not? It doesn't make any difference, because if we have a county board say, you know what, we don't have to raise these or die, we'll just keep paying for those out of the general budget of the county.
Right, right.
Now, are, are we going to say, okay, if you utilize these services, then you're the one who's going to pay for them more individually?
I, I, I agree with that concept, but you have, you guys know, in a, in a, in a fiscal, what we're talking about, what we average in fee intake? Just ballpark?
Well, what do you mean?
Well, if we raise these rates at the business, at the rate of business we're doing now, what will we generate?
The idea was, we're not going to generate that much, because we didn't raise them all. His increase in the county clerk was sixty-three thousand, I thought, or seventy-seven.
That's an estimate.
An estimate, yeah.
Yeah, because it depends on whether or not, like I'm saying, somebody else may understand something.
That's a total.
And about, a justice was going to be about fifty-eight, that's sure, did I read that right? The full potential, but the, the reality of that is, that doesn't always happen.
Right, so probably a minimum of a hundred thousand, just say, be safe.
Yeah, but total of all of it.
Maybe more like a hundred and one, but it depends on the rate, you never know what the use could drop off in one area, the.
Well, and the other side about that is, I think financially, the way I look at it is, if, if you, you don't just lose a hundred, if it's, if it truly costs that much, and there's debatable, but if you don't get it out of there this year, but then your financial responsibility to this county, you've cost that county not only the hundred and twenty thousand that year, but you've cumulative for that year, that year, and that year. Okay? That's four times a hundred and twenty thousand all of a sudden. That's a little bit of change, as Everett Percy used to say, you know?
Yeah.
So.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
So some of those fees I've been raising for, what is it, eight, ten years, something like that?
Are you quoting him from a book or?
Actually, he said he'd throw a few million dollars, you know, pretty soon it sounds should add up, I think.
Millionaire. Millionaire.
The cat came. Somebody over on the window.
Anything else, Jeff?
Okay.
I guess he doesn't.
County clerk?
Nope.
Nothing?
Election go all right and everything?
What did that election cost us?
I don't know yet. I mean, what we've done is we've taken, uh, the way it used to be budgeted, where you guess, where one election might run you thirty-five thousand. And then in the spring, and then in the fall, it might be seventy thousand, and so you, it's hard to make that work just right for planning. So our vendor went to a, 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 more of a, well, it's like a two and a half year contract. And he taken the total estimated amount and just divided into eight quarterly payments. So for budgeting purposes, we know that each year, whether we have one election or two elections, this is what's going to cost us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it smoothes out the peaks and the valleys, and, uh, but as far as, uh, adding all the, I don't have all the expense in from the, uh, newspapers, and we don't have all the, we don't have the election judges' checks cut, there's mileage, there's, uh, there's all kinds of things in there, we just don't have those.
Do, do we need to think about whittling down the polls some more?
Well, I would like to, but we're, our hands are tied on that, at the state level, the laws say you got it can only do so much.
Okay.
And we're there.
And we are basically there.
I figured we were, but I thought it was.
Yeah, I, I will tell you that it's very preliminary, that there are a handful of us, uh, my colleagues in, in our zone, which is about twenty-five counties, that we are meeting together to work on election issues whereby we want to try to get some relief from the legislature on some of these antiquated laws.
You mean like having to have ten judges at one spot?
I mean like having to have ten judges at one spot, having to, uh, the, the publishing requirements are burdensome, uh, for a lot of counties, uh, and, yeah, there's just a lot of expense.
Do you foresee, Aaron, have you guys talked about any way that we can conduct elections out on, on the internet? I mean, we do everything else, we bank, we do everything else, I mean, is there a way we could get a PIN number and vote electronically, early vote?
I certainly am not, I'm certainly not the authority on that, I know that has been discussed, uh, at, at the state level.
You could vote with your link card.
Yeah.
I'm not certain.
That somehow didn't surprise me.
Jeff screwed up again.
In front of the press.
Be more people vote that way.
There's some concern about voting on the internet with all the security and.
But, yeah, you, you, you send out a, an absentee vote with somebody, and they take it to somebody allegedly, get them to sign it and vote, and send it back to you, I mean.
I understand.
I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we, I just wonder if you'd heard anything, I see in, in the future, we do everything else on the internet.
Right, right.
I mean, it sure would be easier for me to do it on the internet.
What about voting sites? And I have heard a lot of debate, read debate about the schools wanting to opt out and, and coming up with different areas, is that still something that's going to be?
Why would the schools want to opt out?
This.
Security.
Security. Oh.
Yes. I, uh, I have a lot of schools, um, they would just assume not have elections there. I would like to see where maybe we would have, well, you'd have to strategically locate a voting center, but you could go to any one of those within your county. You know, if you were, had a doctor's appointment early in the morning up in Champaign, but you live down at the bottom of Edgar County, on your way home, you could stop by at any one of those voting centers, as long as you were.
And that's doable with the computer age, I mean.
That is doable with computer age, and I, I believe that's the way they do it over in Vigo County. They have, uh, I think, three or four voting centers, you can go to any, any one of those you want, and it's all elect, it's, well, I haven't looked at the system, but obviously it has to be real time to know that the voter went in and voted at two o'clock in the afternoon, is not going to go back to another place at six o'clock.
If you had some places you wanted, KC Hall, flat level.
Yes.
You could put every, in my mind, everybody, you could put everybody that's at Crestwood and at Gaze Home Mound, but like, bigger building.
Right.
Because, you know, yeah, I mean, we're someplace like, you know, someplace like that, because you could, somebody's checking their ID, it doesn't have to be some representative, because not all your judges are actually local, local township people.
Yeah, you pick prison to work down here.
To work down here, you know, so it's like, if I didn't know who Mike was, I said, Mike, I need to see some ID, he shows me some ID, I don't really have to know him from Adam, you know, and he, you don't want to vote.
I've, I've looked and considered it different options, uh, but.
But just they're restricted by state statute.
Yeah, and, you know, they have, uh, they have numbers, uh, six hundred to eight hundred, uh, voters per precinct, and, uh, you know, if you get more than that, then you have to divide that precinct up, and. There's a lot of work and research yet to be done with the election.
Is Liberty, is that?
Liberty is our vendor.
Is our, our vendor?
Yes.
And are they the ones that, do they work on, I know, you know, when we were all there that night, they had a glitch, or there was some sort of thing, is that, is that, is that something they look at to say, how do we not have that?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say that, that Liberty, in my opinion, is, is the best vendor we could ask for. I'm very satisfied with Liberty, uh, the relationships we have, we ask a lot of questions of Liberty throughout the year, and we get our answer quicker than we do at the state. Now, the issue that happened on election was a jammed ballot at Crestwood, and they caught that right when it happened, and, uh, so kudos to, uh, Ray Young for catching that. They knew they would be off a ballot, and see, you have to stick this tabulator thing in the black box, and, and then when it, the ballot runs through the tabulator, and it goes on into the black box. well, sometimes, for whatever reason, it catches, and the ballot got, it got so far in, and, and then, but they had to take the machine, they had to pull the thing apart, then the ballot went on in, and the next ballot that went through went right on in and didn't, and it didn't show that it counted. Anyway, anyway, uh, after that, it ran fine, so we had to take those ballots Tuesday night and run those through up in, in our office, just to make sure. But we had to clear out the early voting tabulator machine first. We had to run all the early votes first, and, which takes a long time. Then we had to rerun all the Crestwood Voting Center ballots, and those matched to a T. So it was just a, it was a, you know, there was a clog with a glitch, and as soon as that got fixed, well, then it just poured out like a waterfall.
So is the only time that people would know, would individual precincts know their tabulations? And what their votings were, or is the only time you'd know it when it all gets cumed in the county?
Well, if I'm understanding your question right, on the hour, we require that they are in balance, meaning the paper application that you sign has to match the total on the tabulation equipment. So that's how we would know.
So you already know what the, the vote is on an hourly basis then?
We know, know.
Or is that the number of voters that was-
That's all we know.
So when, when would you know, at the very end of the day, are those individual precincts, would they have a way of knowing?
What the results are.
Yeah, they tabulate.
In their particular voting center?
They, there is a, inside the tabulator, which is locked and sealed, there is a printer. And at the end of the night, they have to, uh, print a final tab, and then the judges have to all sign off on that.
So, so the judges at those precincts have seen what they were before they bring that into the courthouse?
Yes, yes, they can look at that, yeah, they can look at that.
If you hadn't had to tabulate the early voting, would that have been a better deal, would it have been faster? You said you had to do that first.
Yeah.
If you didn't have to do that, would that have sped things up yet?
We are, we are going to discuss, and the Beacon did an excellent job in reporting this, but we're, we're gonna discuss, uh, the process, the timing and processing of early voting. We shut down early voting Monday at four o'clock, on the day before the election, okay? Then that's it, that's done, finished. I see no reason why we can't go ahead and get those done.
Well, except you'd know what the results are.
I, I would know what that, what came out of the early voting, yes, but there was some discussion that, and now our vendor has representatives that come out on election day with us, so it's not the owner of the company. But we were discussing whether when to run the early votes and when not. They suggested that we wait until everything comes in, and that's just a matter of opinion. And I'm thinking that we're going to run them sometime before everything else starts to come in, let's say it that way. So at seven oh one on election night, polls are closed everywhere in the county. I'm gonna run my early votes then, because it takes thirty to forty-five minutes before precincts gather up their stuff and come in. I'll have that all ready to go. But there, but there was a misunderstanding as to then taking that information, the early votes, and pushing that out to the internet. They would not be complete reports, because all the precincts have not reported yet. And I basically said, you know, I, I don't really care about that yet, because it should update as, obviously as the precincts come in. But before, I wanted to make sure that I have every vote before we hand the reports to the people out that are doing the chalkboard. Because that's, I mean, that, you have to have, so you gotta, you gotta wait till all, till those precincts are in. There's a way that we can speed the process up, and we're going to do that.
I always vote in Redmond, and we've got Buck and embarrassed townships both voting.
Right.
I found it curious, this thing, there were only four judges in the building. In the years past, there's been ten or twelve. Do you need four, is that the minimum, or that was my question?
Well, the, okay, the law, the, the statute says you have to have, uh, five per precinct, okay? And then you have to have somebody, you know, whatever their job descriptions are, I mean, I, yes, okay, so there would be ten. Why do I need ten people to do the job that-
No, I'm not saying you do, but I'm just saying there were only four there.
Well, and that's because we had one quit, or one quit the night, the day before the election. So you run into that, I mean, you, and you just deal with that.
Yeah, you've had to move people.
Had to move people around, yeah. That's the part that we wanna, it, it's, it's being done all around the state, where it's hard to find election judges, and the expense of the election judges, and I know that there are a lot of counties south of I-80 that are doing the same thing that we're trying to do. And the state board is, uh, they seem to be, what's the word, is it empathetic? That they understand, so.
Do you have anything else?
Thank you, by the way, for explaining that. I appreciate it myself.
It was, it was very frustrating that everything was delayed, and, but, um, we, well, in my, I've already decided we've worked through that, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be next time.
Was that, was that similar to the election two years ago, and the general election where it had several results up there, and then we couldn't, like, couldn't find certain precincts or whatever? Was that the same type of deal, and it was a pause, and then, like, five, four of the precincts came up in the, what was it, two thousand and twelve, I guess it would have been, general?
Yeah. And I don't, I don't fully know how the, there was an issue with the website when you, when you go off of hours. You, you go onto my website, then you click on Liberty Systems, and then that takes you to their site where they post, you know, all the results. And now what goes on there, I don't know, but I think there was an issue with the internet.
But, but we didn't post it in the courthouse at that time. I thought there was some issue with whether or not where certain ballots were, or whatever, they didn't get run through correctly that time too. There were like four, three or four precincts, that was in twelve. That's why it's in Jeff. Edgar came through with three hundred more votes than possible for Jeff, I remember that.
And I finally got him.
Yeah, that, that was, but I didn't know if that was a similar type, you don't, you don't have a clue what I'm talking about, do you, John?
Well, I'm, I'm still, I'm still very in this.
But it wasn't the same, yeah, one, I didn't, that's why I meant it wasn't like the same type of thing.
Wasn't the same problem.
It was like a big pause, and then it was like, four of the precincts somehow, that's all.
Do you have anything else?
Today's the day to vote for Brett Eldredge. Vote acn.com.
Mr. Chairman, I move to discuss, go to close session to discuss appointments, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public county pending litigation and setting the price for sale or lease of property owned by this public body.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, none of the usual signs. Opposed, same sign.
Hey, before you leave- I'm sorry. What happened at the Circle K? There was three state vehicles pulled up there and cops everywhere. Have you heard any?